No audio. I'm here, no audio.
Let's see.
There we go.
Um.
I can hear you now.
Okay. Um yes, I'm going to ask him if he's.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Here.
Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
We have a war. Thank you. Typically, we would have the pledge of allegiance, but we're, you know, wait and do that during the regular meeting. So item two on the agenda is approval of the city council special meeting agenda for tonight, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, the motion to approve the agenda for tonight, the special meeting agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The section. It's been moved and seconded. We have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passed. Thank you. On the consent count, here we have point one to approve the minutes of the regular meeting by August tenth, twenty twenty three. Four point two, approve the minutes of the special meeting September seventh, twenty twenty two. Yeah, four point three, approve resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty eight regarding may be three sixty one. May be finding necessary to continue to conduct Brown Act meetings virtual. Have a motion to approve. Uh, excuse me, first I'm going to open this to public comment, sorry, public comment on the consent calendar. Nobody here at City Hall. Anybody on Zoom?
There is nobody else on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
A bigger motion to uh. We made a motion to to uh approve the second order, uh four point one, four point two, and four point three.
I'll second that motion.
And we have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Aye.
Mayor Ackerman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passed. Item five, council staff communications. For this meeting, we're going to, we're going to skip this part. And so with that, I adjourn the special meeting. We're going to take a break just for a minute. Actually, we have a few minutes. I see it's not quite six thirty, so we'll adjourn until six thirty.
I'd want to. Stop video. But I want to see if I can get. They're supposed to be. Oh, good. Um, I was hoping to get the sound, Mike's sound out of the speaker, so I kind of wanted to see if I could figure that out.
I'm here if you can hear me. Yeah, I had, I had no audio. I couldn't hear anything there for a bit, so I don't know.
I'm working on that. I'm trying to see. How I could do this. Thing. This is embarrassing. So this is embarrassing. Select a speaker, echo cancelling. I just don't remember which one it is. I don't remember which, which one it is that comes through the ceiling. Oh, select a microphone, select a speaker. Headphones. Why have these speaker headphones? Oh, I see. Coming into that. Sorry. I feel like I'm trying to close. I can't figure it out. That's the only thing I can think, figure out. Logitech. It's not what we want, though. Thanks. That, is anybody's mic on? Can you turn your mic on for a second? Oh, brother. Um, I wish I had Mike's phone number. Maybe I will send him a chat.
Yeah, I'm here. I can hear you.
Okay, good, good. First, we're on a pause until six thirty. I just don't know if he's listening to it through my computer or the rest of the stuff.
I hear you pretty, you know, loud and clear, so.
Okay, good. Right, I know, right? There you go. Two minutes. Playing through the speakers up top before, but now I don't hear it. I need Mary Ann to talk a little closer to her mic for it to come through the speakers. I think we are ready. I hope so. Do we need more chairs or anything?
The city, the city council regular meeting for Thursday, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, is now called to order. For those wishing to participate via Zoom, please follow the information on the agenda. This meeting will be recorded, and at this time, we ask you to please silence all cell phones or similar devices. Do we please have a roll call? Councilmember White. Here. Councilmember McLaughlin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sim.
Here.
Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
We have a war. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to invite the Voice Council to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So for everybody, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Well, everybody, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the love of our religion, its sentence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which we shall talk. Item number two is to approve the city council regular meeting agenda for tonight, September twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
Make a motion to approve the agenda presented.
I'll make a second.
I moved it seconded, move this with roll call vote. Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember McLaughlin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sim. Mayor Ackerman.
Hi.
Thank you, motion passed. Item number, item number three is for general public comment. Under provisions of the California Code, the city council, citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda, will do so at this time, at complete, super seat middle part, will be definitely be per, or following the instructions noted on the agenda. Speakers will be called by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item is to be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and state their name and community of residence. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from materially discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda unless it be demonstrated to be of an urgency nature or urgent need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Do we have any general public comments? Is there anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Item number four, presentations, proclamation, and appointments. Item four point one, proclamation and remembrance and honor of Valerie Klein-Selter. I'd like to open this for public comment. Is there anybody here in City Hall who'd like to please come up?
John Campbell, Kirkland, California. Valerie is my mother. Valerie is community service. Started in late eighties when the then supervisor, John Begovic, appointed her to a recycling policy committee. After the family purchased the home in Plymouth in nineteen ninety one, she immediately realized she wanted to be involved in the decision making process, which would shape the future of this town, and became involved in the town's politics. By the mid nineties, she was elected to the council and became as mayor for the first time in ninety six, I believe. Uh, she would go on to hold this position again a few times in her life. Other accomplishments Valerie's included Chair of the Central Sierra Planning Council and Central Sierra Economic Development Agency, Chair of the Central Sierra RCD from two thousand and three to two thousand and nineteen, President of the AMR RCD, President of the California and Nevada Association RCD Councils, Vice President of Pacific Rim Association RCD Councils. She also managed public projects, including water projects with the California Department of Water Resources, economic development projects with U S D rural development, various conservation projects with the Sierra Nevada Conservancy, and once, as a request of the Obama administration, she got to represent rural California at the White House. Pretty not long list of accomplishments, and she cared about this town immensely. And uh, I hope that we work to preserve her legacy and uh, work as a council to have better decorum sometimes, and work to make sure that all the voices in the town are heard, not just the loudest, that sometimes fully on social media and other videos.
Mm hmm.
Are there others here at City Hall who'd like to make public comments?
It's uh, with a heavy heart. Been up here tonight, uh, just to be participative about you, a good thing that I was trying to. She was very, very uh involved, many, she was very vocal in all the projects, she was involved with a permanent client, she was very, very vocal, and she was always working as the, as the community. And I wanted to point out just a couple of things where Valerie was um, on the, on this, was uh, moving in, and so one of them was uh, back in the, in the uh, nineties, there was an opportunity with the birth of a subdivision to, to make a, which is proposed three hundred year trade report, uh, where it's sort of homes currently. Uh, that was not a bit of positive, because revenue is the trade report, it goes back to motor vehicles, that piece, and the state end of redevelopment today. And, and, and makes a bottom line, there was time they, she successfully worked with Kevin Stewart, and uh, for many, many months, they worked on and developed, uh, a agreement for them, they don't put that in a brace, they had a, 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 towards, and, and even on, uh, base of, of the city income. Uh, that was just one of the things that she had done. She was very involved, I remember she was very involved with, with designing and, and in the pre-pres留 project, which was the alternative to the, the type of lending, tie in, but they, they. Uh, she was involved to that, uh, the uh, tie in, let's see, uh, A N V A, that was somewhat forced by, uh, permanently, and they, they wanted us to, to go in that direction or, or, they will recall, recall the grant we had. And Valerie fought it very hard, and uh, she was very, very opposed to it. Had we not joined in A N V A today, we would not have kept the order, and wanted to pay for four percent less than what they were. And, and it's going to be claimed in, uh, one of the, now we had the insight, uh, to fight for it, and shoe the shine. She went, and she then went to work for, with the Central Sierra, uh, council after she got here. Remember, one of the projects that she was very involved in got was not perfect, but perfect, which is every spot, so it's, it's definitely in the field. And uh, she was actually involved in all kinds of things, but she was already counsel prior to the road, and everything was getting involved with, with the practice part. He was one of the people that proposed to make that part, the practice part in the first place. He's very involved in that. And of course, you know, following up, she was involved with the Purple Heart, uh, deal with the, that is. So those are just a few insights that she was very, very bright and very strong of the day. It's just, uh, I, I, I would think about, I just say all the time that she's been working with community. And I've never, ever seen a reflection of anything that she's done for Valerie's benefit. It was always for the community. And it's, it's, it's rare in life to meet very many people that dedicate their electric community service, and she is one, and I am very, very proud to have shared with her, and there will be a true, true industry.
Is there anybody else in here in City Hall who might want to come up and speak during the public comment? I think just for clarification, is it some of the opportunity to speak on this subject? I wasn't sure, I wasn't looking at Jamie, so I didn't want to speak out of her.
Oh, okay.
Mayor, I may suggest also, some people may also want to speak out for the property even.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Jamie Lavego, Fenneltown. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening in memory of Councilmember Klein-Bell. When I sat down to prepare my words for this evening, I still hadn't moved past the point of being angry. Angry that she left this time, this world at this time. Angry because, as many of you know, she was at the center of a mountain of critics at the time of her passing. Those critics, mostly Facebook warriors, who I am sure felt righteous in their criticisms at the time, no doubt felt a bit of regret about their tone, if not their actions and their words now that she is gone. It was not uncommon over the years for me to see Valerie post a challenging city council meeting, and she would tear up. She cared a lot, and she took these criticisms to heart. And although you sign up for these things, when you put yourself in the political arena, when you are outspoken about your beliefs, Valerie can help, but sometimes wear her heart in person. It wakes me up a bit to think that her unexpected passing happened at a time when she no doubt felt misunderstood and perhaps hurt. I can hope that maybe out. That maybe out of her unexpected passing. This community might do a little gut check. A gut check to our community and on how we treat each other. A reminder of what's truly important. A reminder that we can disagree, but we need not be disagreeable. We must remember the importance of civil discourse. That we not forget, at the end of the day, we are neighbors. Valerie was an essential part of the fabric of this community. She was a friend. She was a ball buster. She was incredibly intelligent and brave. I wouldn't say she wasn't thanked because doing so failed to recognize her spirit. But she had nothing but good intentions when it came to serving this community. In my mind, she was a member of a very special club of hardworking, community-minded, selfless women. Who were willing to take some pretty good licks for what they believed in. Women like Marla Marina and Pat Shapleton. Valerie deserves to be remembered right alongside them for her strength of character and her contributions to this city. I can only hope to one day be just like them. In closing, I would like to acknowledge Valerie's unconditional love for her children. You would be hard pressed to find another mother who was prouder of her children than Valerie. All of this other stuff paled in comparison to her love for them. I know because I spent countless hours at Prospect Cellars. Listening to her go on and on about all of them over a glass of Barbera. I will miss those conversations. I will miss her friendship and her fantastic laugh. The Lavenko family offers our consolation to her family and to this community. At the loss of such a treasure for our town.
Is there anybody else here in City Hall who would like to make public comment and? I will read it. I will be reading the resolution and then we'll have public comment after that too. So whenever anybody would like to come up.
Hunter Burns, I'm not real good at these times because I'm a emotional person. That's why Valerie and I. You might have heard on our Zoom call to the last part of my, like, tenure where we were talking about things we're really passionate and see kind of hears. Both kind of crying in our voices because we're both very passionate about local politics and people in general. And I thought should be told. What number is going to be there? She kind of talked me into it between her view. And so I'd only do it if Valerie would sit to my, I mean, you left. Because you'd have to talk me through some of the nuances of being, you know, running a meeting. I don't know, but there's a lot of nuances to run in a city council meeting and. You know, that was kind of, it was a little bit, I guess. Overwhelming, I guess, a little intimidated, sorry, I got you. So if you ever listen to some of the meetings. And then you would hear her speaking under her breath, she's just giving me direction. And I'm really appreciative of her and I, you know, I grew up knowing her as John and Jeff's mom. And and when she left, I knew her as my friend, you know. And the one thing I want to say, it's a call to action that she had really for everybody. It started, I guess, with me as a young, to be on, to be mayor. And the call to action is for young people, be more involved, you know, one of the things we always shout is talk about tournaments. The tournament is only work, more people are willing to get involved. And so the call to action, when I see young people here on the web, I see some names that are really hot, people coming up in our county. The message that she would want me to give to you guys is that get involved in your community. It's important. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in City Hall who would like to come up and speak? Is there anybody on who has their hand raised and would like to speak during public comment?
No raised hands at this time.
Okay. We've prepared a proclamation. Honored to have the opportunity to read this. Proclamation in honor of Valerie Klein Felder. Whereas the city of Plymouth, California, foster respected civic leader, true public servant, and friend on September twenty-second. Twenty twenty-three with the passing of the council member Valerie Klein Felder. And whereas council member Klein Felder was a tireless and passionate leader whose intelligence and tenacity. Positively impacted the city of Plymouth and surrounding community. And whereas council member Klein Felder. Had an extensive public service career, serving on the Plymouth City Council as a council member. Between the years of nineteen ninety-four and two thousand and twenty-three, including two years as mayor in nineteen ninety-seven and twenty-twenty-two. And whereas council member Klein Felder. Also contributed great leadership and insight to the city of Plymouth. Through her active involvement in city water rights. Issues related to the Arroyo Ditch. As well as serving as the city's representative delegate for LAFCO. Where she devoted her efforts on regional planning issues to improve the quality of life for Plymouth's residents. And whereas council member Klein Felder. Devoted over twenty-five years of service to her community. Spirit leading and championing various initiatives, including the designation of the city of Plymouth. As an official Purple Heart city, establishing Highway forty-nine as a scenic corridor. And ensuring help for small businesses and stimulating local economic development. And whereas council member Klein Felder was committed to efforts to preserve and protect. The local environment and the city's historical character and charm. And whereas. Council member Klein Felder's public service also included serving as the chair for multiple organizations. As well as holding positions of leadership with various councils. At the request of Secretary Agriculture, Tom Vilsack. Councilmember Klein Felder participated in an event, in an event of the Brookings Institute. And at the request of the Obama administration. Represented rural California in an economic roundtable at the White House. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Plymouth hereby recognizes. The many contributions of council member Klein Felder. Over the course of her distinguished career and her legacy of dedicated service. To the city and surrounding community and be it further proclaimed. That the Plymouth City Council and the staff of the city of Plymouth do hereby extend. Our deepest condolences to council member Klein Felder's family. And the many people she touched. And expressed the intention that the Plymouth City Council thereby could affirm my council member Klein Felder. Posthumously. In honor of her dedication and service to the city of Plymouth, the title of. Honorable City Council Member Valerie Klein Felder in memoriam. Like to ask the council and colleagues if they'd like to make comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Obviously, this is. Very difficult. You know, time for us as a, as a council, as a city. You know, I'm the newcomer to the council and Valerie and I. Were, you know, continuing to to get to know each other, to, you know, to learn from one another, to to grow. She's been a remarkable individual with, you know, countless years of dedication to our community. And, you know, obviously, this doesn't come easy for any of us. I wish I could have been there in person this evening. As a, as a tribute to her, but I'm glad I'm able to be a part of this in recognizing and thank you for reading very beautiful resolution. Madam Mayor, so Godspeed to Valerie's family and close friends and thank you for this opportunity.
Vice Mayor Sim.
I personally have only known Valerie for three years. Much less than most of people from. Valerie left this way toward. The five of us on council do not agree on all issues. But I can assure you, we all do the job for the right reasons. We love her. Valerie took the city council very seriously. As mayor and city council member for many years. Her presence on council will be missed. Thank you, Valerie, for all you've done for Plymouth.
I. I'm going to go next because I'd like to have the opportunity to. Speak last. I also had only known Valerie for a short time. Larry, I can relate to what you were saying. I was proud to serve as vice mayor when Valerie was mayor. And I learned a lot from Valerie and then when I had the honor of becoming mayor, there were plenty of times she would sit next to me. And whisper. And give me a nudge and prompt me on what to do next. And I'm going to miss that. I'm going to miss a lot of things. I, in the past week, had been reading the proclamation and working on the proclamation. With. The rest of the folks here at City Hall, there are a lot of words that have been very complimentary words. That have been used to describe Valerie. And I thought. We can't make it through the evening without describing Valerie as sassy. And I hope that doesn't offend anybody and I really wondered, should I use the word or not? Because when I was a kid, that wasn't the thing, to be sassy. And so I decided to look it up. And nowadays, it means lively, bold and full of spirit. So I stand by my choice of words to describe Valerie as sassy. And my guess is that one day, a long time ago, maybe when she was a little girl, somebody said, Valerie, don't be so sassy. And I thank God she didn't listen. I also might add that I did receive a personal, I received personal communication from Sheriff Redmond. Who sent his sincere condolences to Valerie's family, to all of you. He said it was an honor to know Valerie personally and professionally. And he sends his, wanted to send his regrets for not being able to be here tonight. Councilmember White.
Well, all day long, I sat and I wanted to write down what I wanted to say, like, I just wanted to speak from the heart. Just because I can speak from the heart, I'm more sincere, but I get kind of difficult time with this. The first thing, and I told Meredith, Meredith, this tonight, I felt honored to say my advice about it. So everyone knows, I don't know the memory of Valerie not being a person involved in my life because she's been around my whole life. I've been Valerie's neighbor for twelve years and actually been Valerie's neighbor longer than that. Consider our block a whole neighborhood. I lived around the block a few times on the way to the Holy Modern House. And I can talk a lot about council and the things, but I'd rather talk about Valerie as a neighbor. And how I knew that I, I figured in on the right neighborhood when I moved in. And I argued with my wife, I said, do not leave that garage door cracked open, do not leave that garage door cracked open. And so I let the garage work on it. I opened up the garage door and there was chickens and an old cat sitting on my driveway. Okay, we're in the right neighborhood. One of the proudest moments, I think I saw is when you guys bought your trailer. And you guys had it out in front of the house. And. You wanted to show me where the grandkids' books were. She wanted to take me and edit. And I can't believe I'm staring at a young man that was one of those grandkids that was supposed to be one of the books. Limit this community. But Valerie was nothing but community. Valerie loved her community. I can say, well, she, we had a lot of differences, there's no doubt about it. But we've always made progress neighborly towards each other. And it's always been a community. And I quote this, sir, I wish I had the video, I couldn't find it, I tried to find it, I had a video. When we used to have the second generation dinners. And she was eating my wife on, she got my wife so tuned up drinking that night. And oh, man, my wife had the biggest hangover the next day. I will always laugh about that one. So I just want to say she's going to be tremendously missed. Valerie works on that, we got it, you know. I wish we could apologize more, but it's not, and as far as differences go, okay, we're all going to have differences, but this is going to be more than that. So that's pretty much what I had to say.
I'd like to invite the public again to make sure, is there anybody else who would like to say something at this time? Is there? Doesn't look like there's anybody on Zoom. So I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I'm sorry. I'd just like to let them know, I know where the flowers came from. The red, white and blue flowers are from the city. The pink ones on the other end and the flowers on people as you came in. The city staff, she had been and those are from the city staff. The purple flowers came from the lead of California.
Oh, they're good.
And the city staff, if you don't want to take those with you, the city staff will deliver them to your home. Here also, if you'd like to present the proclamation to the public.
I'd like to introduce Valerie's program, her greatest accomplishment. Jeff Campbell, owner of Campbell Construction. Katie Malcolm. Currently. Don Campbell, Director of Maintenance at Kirkwood P U D. Dr. James Campbell. Recently graduated, can you see this? Biden, Jeff's son. And Jeff Klein, construction council, you're great. This is Ron Klein Felder Valerie's husband, thirty-one years. New Year's Eve, December twenty-ninth, New Year's night. New Year's Eve, December twenty-ninth, New Year's night. Thank you.
Before we end today's meeting. I just want to say, we have the pass of the entire city, of Plymouth and the community. We'd like to offer our sincere condolences to you all and to all Valerie's family and friends and loved ones. We appreciate all of you who made time to come out tonight and you'll be in our thoughts and prayers. With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Bye, Mike.